Okay. Shall we get started? Okay. All right. House of Orders? The regular board meeting? I've got a school board, March 13th, 2023. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school initiatives not appearing in the public comment portion meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as required to subject. Basically, the parent may declare at times the chairperson may interrupt or comment on the individual statement. My hope here, including more statements for that order to rightly breach personal rights, obvious of obscene and relevant revising. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. Okay, stand for president.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the consent agenda. Any motion for approval of that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Cool of bills. So you have just had a little question about the water field from Teddy John's Water Store?
Yes.
Why don't they, you know, the dinky little?
So it's every time they deliver, they send us an invoice.
Oh, so instead of sending us?
They fill it? Yeah, so it's in the elementary cafeteria because we don't have a water, we don't have a sink in there. At the time, so they just have a their tabletop where they put the gallons for the kids to get fresh water.
Okay, so we get, we get charged for whatever they put in to fill it up?
Yeah, and then it's also the salt for the software as well, so it's water and salt.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did just look, yeah, those were a little erratic, I guess.
Yeah, it's just if they come once a week to refill it, then we get a separate invoice for each delivery, yeah.
Yeah, that's. Do you have to know how much the is propane is costing us versus what it cost us last year? I know it's gone up tremendous amount.
I don't, but I can get that right for next time.
It's not big, I just thought maybe it happened.
Yeah, I can certainly run a comparison from last year to this year just to see, and I know it was extra cold this year at the week.
Well, like, that's right, but I think that actual cost per gallon.
It probably did increase, yeah.
And the custodial supplies here for 2,500, is that cleaning supplies?
Yeah, so anything that the like the night cleaning crew use, it comes from that accomplice.
Yeah, I got it, I just got to have this one. What's the J. Bull's security?
Security key. It has to do with the code, the multi-factor authentication that has the computers. So this is like a testament to that.
Right?
Yes.
It has to do with your computer, Justin?
Correct, it's in order, because that mobile step verification. Your system instead of using my personal phone for that.
Oh, okay, okay. I just thought that, you know, there's that rest that's missing out on her.
No, I mean, you could do that as well.
But we use the, we, we get the verification.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the February bills. Very well said.
Any discussion? In all, which in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, correspondence, guest comment participation, we've got one, maybe Ashley would like to speak. Like, well, well, it is an agenda item?
Well, no, not specifically, it's not regarding the calendar you're going to approve tonight.
Oh, did you bring calendar?
Yeah.
Okay, um, then this is the proper place, if it's not the calendar, we're going to discuss right now. So go ahead.
All right. So I just tried to come up here. One of the paths is just some like information about looking at the possibility of a four-day school week versus five. Um, and I'm here as a community member and parent to talk about it. So I know it's probably not something we can get in motion and get going for the next school year, but I think it's something possibly worth looking at, workshopping for future school years. I think there's a lot of pros to it for cutting costs, we're constantly talking about budget and there being no money and things like that. I think it could help with sub costs, teachers missing days, students missing days, appointments, things like that, hourly employees, transportation, overhead costs, all that type of stuff, I think. Could help to reduce the budget and maybe give some better balance and also help with teacher retention, as we know, that's kind of looking bleak across the nation at the moment. And with enrollment to teacher college numbers, it's not going to be getting any better, so there's just, what I provided was just some MTSBA article where they answered questions about how you go about doing that, getting parent community. Input and then, of course, staff and things like that, and then just the article that the B P came out with where Fairmont Egan just went to a four-day, or four-day school week. They're the third, I think, in the Flathead County, and there's 175 schools across Montana that are now doing that, and that kind of seems to be the trend with a lot of different places, so. If nothing else, I just kind of wanted to plant a seed for it, and maybe it's, I think it's something worth workshopping and getting community for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um. West Valley DPO report.
It's done.
What's that? Okay.
Is that a vote?
Then we have a report from the PTO. I keep seeing these things up on the marquee that we have fundraisers at these different restaurants, but we never have a report from the PTO. I wonder what the others, but, okay, but nobody's going to speak up. Okay, well, no PTO report. How about the West Valley Teachers Association?
That's us.
Actually.
All right, we brought some kiddos too that are going to share some stuff with you. More exciting than us. While they're getting set, I'll just go over a couple of things. I actually teach first grade, we all do, Lindsay Berg, Andy Briney, and Ashley Thompson. So we just brought a couple of slides to show you for the kids to start, this is kind of our, not kind of, this is our reading data from fall to winter. And just looking at our different tiers here, how as a grade level we have kind of progressed, so. Huge shout out to the first grade team, like we are seeing kind of them move through these tiers how we want, not too fast, not too slow. And just seeing that green on a level group growing and kind of our intervention groups getting smaller, so. We've been working really hard, obviously, with all these kids, and then not possible without all of our parents who are pulling our small groups, and. We have had some struggle with that, losing a para, we had to lose a reading group, all the reading groups got bigger because of it, so. Not having that para support is difficult because we would not be seeing this kind of growth and improvement across our grade level without those intervention groups which they provide, which is awesome, so. And then, of course, Tanya for facilitating all of the things for reading group and everything, so. Good job.
That's a great job, actually, that's a big job.
And some fun stuff, we went on a field trip to Glacier Park, so we have some kiddos that are going to share, Ross, if you want to come on up, share some things. That we did, over here, Ross. Ross is going to share some writing that she did about the field trip.
Yesterday, we went on a field trip to Glacier National Park. We got to spend all morning snowshoeing. We learned about animals that hibernate, migrate, and resist. Did you know that hummingbird migrates? It's true. I had a blast, it was so great.
Beautiful, beautiful handwriting for a first grader. Hello? Me, and I've got a couple too, can we go first?
In my opinion, my favorite field trip was Glacier National Park. I liked the predator play game. I liked learning about what animals do when a predator comes to catch them. I liked when we had to freeze. Also, it, also, I liked sledding, sliding down the hill. It felt like sledding, but without a sled. Now you know why you should go snowshoeing at Glacier National Park.
My opinion, Glacier National Park was the best field trip. I loved swimming the pines, the mountains were breathtaking, and other reasons, I liked the good field. The river was beautiful, there was also the beaver den in the river. Snowshoeing was really a good way to get exercise and see the beauty. This is why Glacier National Park was the best field trip.
And we did a unit on penguins, and so I have a couple of students that are going to share some fun facts about penguins.
My name is Molly. I'm going to read you a story about penguins. Humbers can fly, but penguins cannot. Penguins live where it's cold, but some live where it's hot. The little blue penguin is very small, but the emperor penguin is big and tall. I like penguins, you like them too? Let's go see them at Purdue.
My name is Julian. My favorite penguin is the Adely. Adely penguins live in and are to cut their eggs hatch in December. They like to hunt krillfish and squid. They have bright bellies and black backs. Their coloring helps camouflage them from predators in the water. Their bellies blend into the sky when predators look up. Their, their back, armpit backs blend into the ocean when predators look down.
My name is Daisy. My favorite penguin is the king penguin. King penguins are the second largest kind of penguin. They are black with white bellies. They have orangish-red cheeks and bellies. They also have yellow on their necks. King penguins like to get around by sliding on their belly across the ice. This is called toboggan.
This is Dara, and we're going to read this together. Penguins swim in icy water. It is important they stay warm. They spread a special oil over their feathers. The oil keeps them waterproof and warm. This is called painting. During art, we drew with crayons on paper. Then we painted the paper. The crayon made the paper waterproof. The crayon is like the oil penguins use to stay dry. So in first grade, we work on extending the number and counting sequence, and so we've been working really hard at writing our numbers the right way and writing above 100, so do you want to show how high you can count? All right?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
All right, that's all we have.
Thank you.
I had two trips outside. We're killing it. Yeah. It's a good time. I'm so excited. Awesome. Yeah. I want to keep wanting to get there. Is this for you guys? Okay. Here, I'm so ready. Yeah. Why would the president's report? But he doesn't stop. I see. I, I started. There you go.
What's that?
Make sure. You're up. Oh, pop ass.
How high can you probably?
It's taking me a lot longer than. I printed off some reading data too, I know last month I showed some math data. And I presented again, not much narrative, just kind of more of the raw data, it's kindergarten through fourth grade. The K through two only have one sheet because fall and winter are on the same page, and then third and fourth have two sheets, one for fall, one for winter. So I just thought I'd throw that out there for you. One second, this. All right. Zoom in a little bit, what I did was went back to our ASOP, and ASOP frontline is the system we use. When a teacher or a para is absent, they put their absence into ASOP, and then the system works to try to cover that absence. It keeps track over time of the amount of unfilled positions or absences and the amount of filled absences. So it didn't take very long, but I went through each day since January 3rd, just because I thought I picked an arbitrary day there just to start. And then just track only the unfilled absences. This does not include absences where no sub was needed or an absence where a sub was assigned to that position. If you add up all of January, in the instructional days, we had 51 absences unfilled. So that was an average of about 2.6 per day that were not filled, and we had 20 school days that month. If you go into February, it gets a little worse. We had a total of 99 absences that were not filled for an average of 5.2 daily, so that means you're walking in and you're down over five people just that day that were not good. And then in March, it's already kicking off to be worse than February. So we haven't had very many instructional days yet, but you can see we had nine on the third unfilled, we had six, seven, seven, five, eight. So we have a total of 5.9 absences unfilled on average so far in March. So the reason that I bring that up is because if we add it all up, into here, we have a total of 203 absences for people that were unable to be filled. That includes classroom teachers and parents. You had a total of 48 school days since January with an average of 4.2 per day. So the reason I bring that up is to show you how hard it's been to staff that and to cover what we need to cover. For student monitoring wise. So what I did was I took a para's schedule, I'll get to that top.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah.
Please scroll back up for just a little bit. I want to ask a clarifying question. So these unfilled positions, so let's say you have a classroom teacher who's absent. Pretty often, if you're able to, you pull a para to fill in, right?
Right.
So is that reflected here as well?
So that means the para is then unfilled as well.
Okay. Because what? What I don't want, or what I want to have is an accurate picture to show that even if a position gets filled with a para.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that all positions were filled by day.
Right.
We're still operating at a deficit whenever it comes to something.
We call, that's our daily slide, is what we call it, because it's so fun. We're just taking from Robert Peter to Pay Paul. But we have to have, have to, have to, without a doubt, cover recesses lunches just because of student safety. So, anyway, but going back down here, you know, and I'll get to that, that part too. I took a para's schedule, Blair's, and I just calculated the duties here of where they're just watching kids, or they're somewhere that where they have to be. And it totaled 125 minutes for 2.1 hours per day. That's, her schedule just happens to have morning recess, she's a kinder lunch, kinder recess, third grade, then fourth grade lunch, then afternoon recess. If we pull her, then we have to cover that. Then you look at the academic skills groups. She has 40 minutes of third grade reading, 40 minutes of kinder reading, 30 minutes of kinder math, 35 of fourth grade reading, and 30 minutes of fourth grade math. That's a lot that she does instructional wise, okay? That comes out to about 175 minutes or 2.9 hours. So if we pull Blair to cover a classroom, that's almost three hours of instruction she is not able to provide if we cannot fill everything, which it's pretty impossible to fill every, everything in that day. So this then becomes the priority, right? This is the safety piece. So if you take the, you know, number of times where they have to be pulled, you know, if we're talking about an average of 4.2, you know, that could be classroom, that could be paras. And I can tell you from experience, rough estimate, this is several hundred hours this year that we will lose in academic instructional time from paras. And it also speaks to the inconsistency kids see in their day, if, you know, they come through and they don't know who their lunchroom person's going to be, expectations are different. Behaviors escalate, same outside, behaviors escalate, you're not seeing the same person, sometimes it's one out there. You just do your best, you can't see everything. At one point, there's, you know, well over 100 plus kids out there at one time. Even one grade level, you know, like second grade or third grade is approaching 100 if they're all here that day. So anyway. Again, the, you know, math works out that we're on pace right here, if we look at ratios, so far with 48 days, we've had 203 unfilled absences. The rest of the year, we've got 57 more days, that means we're on pace for 444 absences that were unfilled. That's only since January, that does not include the beginning of the year.
Can I ask a question to me? When I was subbing here last year, I would have subbed every day, like I asked, can I just be a permanent sub? Because they needed subs every single day, and, you know, of course, you know, I guess it has to go through the budget, now I see. But is that a possibility where you just hire, I don't know, budget wise, I haven't looked at numbers or anything, but that you hire permanent subs? So you always have, you know you always have somebody here to teach a class, and if you don't need a sub, which you always do.
Right.
Then they're available as paras or whatever. I think that's something that we could consider as in the long term. The challenge, that's one person, right? And as you can see from. But I don't know how many, would it be easier to find subs to hire permanently?
A lot of people don't want to do that because subs don't get benefits.
Right.
The other reason that they, they don't want to do that is because they don't want to work that much.
Right.
It's, it's very rare that you have a sub that wants to work every day of the week. So we have one sub that comes in and fills positions for us as a para, but she only works certain number of days of this, and then if she's gone that day, then, you know, we're, we're down, you know, even more.
Right.
And that's kind of like up here, you know, we are at this moment as of today, still down six paras from where we were at this time last year. In 21, 22, sped had a total of five paras, title had nine paras, and in 22, 23, we have three in the sped department with the same number of life skills kids. And we have, we are down to five in title, and that, this would be an example of a, of a title para who does, you know, monitoring students and instruction. The life skills parents like in the sped, their whole day maybe with a kid that just is there for them, you know? So, so the subs are working, you know, as hard as they can to fill those, but even today, for example, we had maybe four absent, which isn't a lot for the size of our staff, but I, I don't think we had a sub in the building. That was not a long-term sub. We had a long-term sub for Alicia Paquette and for Jessica Milky, and no subs. We had a long-term sub for Alicia Paquet and for Jessica Milky and no subs. So I don't know if it's just simply hiring, you know, as a full-time sub or
But if someone wanted to work full-time, we have full-time positions available and we don't have applicants for those positions that are open.
Yeah, right now we have one still open. We were able to hire for our computer lab monitor who left us in December, share a while. And I mean, other than that, we, we used to have five, six paras, five for a position that we are so lucky to get any really, you know. But I think that speaks to the toughness of the job. It's an incredibly hard job. And it's one of the most important and it's paid, you know, not very well, too. And so lots of challenges and I, I don't present solutions. I just present
I just wondered if it might have, might be easier to hire somebody who wants to, like I'm a retired teacher. So I want to, I don't want to stand on the playground all day, but I would teach any grade all day, every day. So I just didn't know. That would be harder or easier to hire than a para?
I, so the last school that I worked at, we actually pursued that route and hired a person who was specifically on staff.
Right.
She was a certified teacher. She moved to the area late, military family. She didn't necessarily want to work full-time, full-time. And within a semester, she was done. Just because the, kind of the wear and tear on a person of being in a different classroom every day, classroom management is already a struggle when you're a substitute. The, the, she wasn't, I think mentally prepared for what it takes to go into kindergarten this day and then sixth grade the next day. And then third grade, you're there for maybe a couple of days. And, and she, I think, thought too, and this would happen here as well, that it would be like an occasional thing, but that she would be our first level go-to person, that she was guaranteed a sub position if we needed one. She wasn't expecting it to be every day and it was every day. So I've seen it attempted and it, there were instances where we were really in a bind and we would beg her and she would come in if we just really pleaded. But the other challenge was from a cultural standpoint, she never really felt like she belonged because she was a sub. So in, in theory, I think it's a great idea. But like I said, and like Richard's pointed out, we, we have open positions right now for paras that we're not getting. We're not getting applicants for, we're not getting qualified applicants for. And then our sub pool is
Yeah, because we tend to hire our subs too, you know, when you say, hey, you come, you're here, you know, much as you can be. But yeah, it's a, it's a really big challenge. I don't think it's only, but I know it's not just unique to West Valley. It is all over the state of Montana. It's all over everywhere. And it's something that I think at a legislative level, we'll have to look at if we want to, you know, continue to provide what we want to provide with these kids. And I don't know if it's a budgetary thing, if we increase pay. Some, I mean, something has to happen because this is not sustainable for our people.
Richard, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you think? I mean, just after Ash's presentation for a week, do you, do you feel that a four-day week would help this situation?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's important, you know, in our consideration at this point.
Not only does it decrease the number of days you need somebody, but it also mental, mental health wise, I think. We, you know, tend to see a lot of burnout at this job anyway, you know, teachers classified. I just really feel like, and that's kind of a different river that we can boat down. But, but I do feel like this is a clear picture of, you know, burnout.
Richard, can I pick you up just a little bit off of that? Cindy said too, because right now we're doing that to our paras. So the exact situation that you described with that sub, I worry every day about their burnout because they come in and they don't know what they're going to do. And every day it's different and they're constantly in different classrooms. So I'm worried because we have a great para team, but it's really hard on them.
Yeah, and I know I'm incredibly biased, but I, I feel, I feel in my heart that we have the best staff in the valley. Especially classified. I mean, those people are unreal at what they're able to do, willing to do. And if we operated in a typical, traditional staff, we, we would be stuck. There would just be no way. And another thing to think about too, you know, is just pulls every, it pulls everything, you know. Even when we're normally staffed, this is an incredibly hard job. If everything is going really well and we're all here every day, it's already that hard. And so this makes it just even, even harder, you know. They used to, I mean, honestly, I've said it before, but it's, it's definitely something that recently since COVID, I think, has been such a huge, huge issue. And it was going that way too even before that.
I just wanted to, one question, comment and question. One, to speak to what Richard is saying. They, part of that too is a para is pulled for a classroom, their groups get canceled. And then all of a sudden, those kids have to stay in your classroom where they're teaching reading intervention groups because these kids, a lot of them can't read yet. And I'm teaching an on or above level group. I, they can't access the curriculum I am, you know, giving to those kids. And then in turn, they just really have nothing to do but sit and read to themselves for thirty-plus minutes. So that's also very difficult. Also, every time you look out the window, Richard or Tanya is out at recess, every single recess. And that is like completely absurd because we need support from, we often need things from Tanya. We often, very often need things from Richard and you can't get any help because they're doing the job of a para outside at recess, every single recess or in the lunchroom. So it's like, just creates chaos all around. But then my other question is, can we make this into some type of nice slide presentation to get out to parents?
Yeah.
So that they feel the weight of what is actually, what's actually going on?
I think that's a great idea, especially with the potential for a general fund levy, you know, this, this summer. You know, these are the types of things that we need to show to the community.
Before we start asking for money, like, hey, this is the reality, not because we want your money, but because this is the reality.
I think we played on the community's heartstrings enough and they told us no. And I think it's time that they see the data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Past anything since 2007 and we can only, you know, the Oliver twist or whatever, you know, so much. And they're still telling us no. So if they see this and they want their kids to have, you know, what they came here for, then it's good, something's going to need to be recovered.
And I, and I do share for community involvement before we have to ask for that money. This would be really important.
Yeah, I just threw this together too. Like the format is terrible. He's just auto-fill.
Well, I appreciate all of you. I know how hard it is. I appreciate all your work.
Yeah, it's, it's a great team. I mean, there's no way we can do it without them. And, you know, the, yeah, it just goes all the way down. Everyone's going to step up and do it. Anna will cancel something, you know, and then she'll have to cover lunch and that, that means two kids she didn't see. And then she'll go get those kids and not do something else. Like take a lunch for herself.
Do you feel like we could help this issue with an attempt at growing a substitute list that would be more reliable? Or do you feel like time is better spent hiring more paras that we can move around and float from place to place? But they all know that, that in and out of the para situation is not easy either.
It's not. And I would say that a para, a good quality para is worth their waiting goal because they can do groups, they can teach kids. That more paras we have, the more groups we have, right? You know, we're restricted budgetary reasons, you know, that we can't do that. But if we had, you know, a sub list that was huge and reliable and a para team that was expanded, it's kind of pie in the sky stuff. So maybe a little bit of each one would be awesome.
Say, I love it. The budget cost lies between the two of them. If we're hiring subs every single day and paying them X amount and versus what a para
Yeah, and that's a good point, too. If you figure out the hourly wage of myself, you know, Tanya, Alicia, Anna, who never doesn't have a closet, that adds up a lot.
Yep, absolutely.
And if you're covering, you know, thirty, thirty minutes is a very, very, there's been two days, I think, since January 3rd that we haven't been out scrambling for that. You know, so that's, that's a lot, you know, it's a lot of money too that's being paid in that way. That's a good point.
And you're spending a lot of time focusing on something that doesn't benefit, you know.
Right.
That isn't what you should be focusing on.
Right.
Because things get dropped, like they need you during those hours because that's their time. They have to come find you.
Exactly. And, you know, it's already hard enough to talk to a teacher. You have to do it at the recess time. You have to do it at their lunch. You have to do it at their specials. Or if you're always pulled for that, then it just limits the amount of time I had face-to-face contact even with the staff. I feel like there's been just a lot of missing, a lot of that missing. I try, you know, I try to say at least hello to every staff member every day and I have not been able to do that at all. Failed a lot last year, but that was something I really tried to do.
And what you're filling in are the safety positions.
Yeah, yes.
We have not do without
Right, exactly.
Playground, lunchroom.
Yeah, and then we're trying our best to cover the academic groups. We've had Alicia's covered up. I mean, Tanya covers all the time. Maybe we have paras even that will teach in a class and then try to cover their own groups too. Julia White's sub or para, excuse me, that leaves at 1:30 and she's offered to stay all day several times just to help cover that. Been in a bind, but
So just to clarify back to the sub list, so, you know, so you have the absence, you guys go down the whole sub list and just get turned down by everyone for that day?
Yep. I mean, I think so. I, I, I can show you here really quickly what, what it looks like. Frontline is very slow. It's incredibly slow, even slower on your phone when you're trying to do it on the go, see where someone is.
I think if we would have targeted that for that recruitment for subs, I think we could probably
I think that's a pie in the sky idea. I'm sorry, but yes, I mean, like, I think people who are willing to commit and sub, they are at premium and to base anything on the idea that we're gonna, that we're going to reinforce our sub list, I think we need to look elsewhere because I doubt that we're gonna ever really get a whole list of subs for either paras or teachers.
Well, maybe if our parents see the numbers that we have times where, you know, I think it's
To cover our kids.
Something that parents don't know. Parents might step up and maybe they have other family members that they can engage in the process as well.
Yeah, and I just feel like we do it, I don't mean we as at West Valley School. I mean, our profession does a pretty bad job advocating for themselves because we just are kind of do-it people. Then, you know, that's just the way it is. And I think we need to start kind of being a squeaky wheel a little bit and say, we need help, you know, come on guys.
And once again, then when I think that we do, I, I subbed for a lot of years, thirteen years, Gelsko Junior High. And there were, I mean, there were times when I would not feel welcome, even though, I mean, I was saving somebody's. But, you know, the rest of the teachers didn't acknowledge that. I'm just saying that we need to maybe be real careful that we engender and affirm the environment for this.
Yeah.
So our parents and, and our, and our teachers, because that's really important.
Yeah, so here's an example of what it looks like. So you log in here, this is for March 13th, 2013. We have a total of ten people gone today, three people that are gone, no sub needed. That would be an example, like a counselor myself. You just don't have kids sitting in front of us every day. Unfilled five and filled two. You know, so you can see the five unfilled here, you know, you go to the ones that were filled. And I think those are the long-term subs. You have Jessica Milky now that we should request. And they're here every day essentially as efficient subs. And you can go to tomorrow. This is a daily thing where we figure out, okay, we're already nine down tomorrow. We're going to walk in tomorrow with five unfilled, most likely. That's assuming if nobody calls out sick tonight or tomorrow morning, which happens a lot. You know, so, so, yeah, it's a daily, daily game where we're, you know, texting each other, trying to figure out what to do. Fifteenth is already eight, beware the, you know, I've seven. So you can kind of see that it's just, I mean, that's where we are. That's our week right there. And then Friday's always the worst and that's already a tenth.
And ASOP puts out to the people who are interested, the Ben Brook makes phone calls.
Yeah.
She tries.
And text people. Say, please, we come in today. And so a lot of times we'll say, I can't get in till 11. I've got an appointment or whatever. It's just, it's just a constant, it's a constant game, a constant puzzle. So, yeah.
Well, I'd rather follow that than first graders. I would just, I guess, to go off what Richard was saying about the subs and getting the word out there. Is this going to be the best Google for me to use, Kat? Well, it's the only one we got, so why not? You're here. I can see both points and Justin, that's a big thing that I've thought about with recruitment is, even before COVID, but particularly since then, I, I've talked to people about subbing and they, they don't even realize that they're qualified unless they have, they think they have done a teaching degree. And so I think getting information out to help people understand that we can use them. I mean, we'll train them up the best we can. And I think that, you know, it might not get us completely full, like you said. But it would be helpful, I think, to get some more information out there about what it takes to use them. And we also used to have a sub volunteer appreciation thing. So I was asked a few hours ago to come in and talk to you a little bit about our new curriculum. And I wanted to give you some more information on the data for our math. I know at the last board meeting, Richard shared some great data on the pyramids and things for K4. And then Tina Burley shared some for five, eight. So I shall put this, I'll pass this around when I get to it. So I just wanted to talk about comparing our data and what our new math curriculum is looking like and how it's going. And teachers can chime in and we'll talk about that. So something to think about with an adoption year for any curriculum changes really hard and it takes time. You're changing the entire way, everything from your teacher manual to your online platform to what the students see, to the support, everything is different. And we actually don't expect to have huge gains right away. We're actually pretty happy with the gains that we're seeing. And we don't know, I mean, it takes time to know what that comes from. We don't know that it's but we don't expect a lot of gains, but we keep a close eye on it. Takes two to three years to discover the full capacity of a new curriculum. And so we're in the first year. I was fortunate to teach this year. So I was in the classroom and I was able to use the math curriculum. So I've had my hands in it quite a bit. And so I've learned a lot about it. We've had trainings. I listed them all there so far. We have another in-person full-day training next We've had trainings. I listed them all there so far. We have another in-person full-day training next Wednesday from the company. Um, and then the other thing that we have that I know the, the math team, last year, the adoption team was really excited about was all the teacher support, and so there's a coaching studio at each grade level called a huddle. To me, it's almost like a private Facebook page where you can post something that you did or a question, and then they can talk to each other and the coach can come in and give them little tidbits and, um, being new, you know, we're just learning about it. Some teachers have taken advantage and are getting in there and using it, and some haven't yet. But like I said, we, two to three years, hopefully, and everybody is kind of getting comfortable and jiving with it. Um, there's also a teacher's corner that is not like a real feedback type of thing, but it's a training modules and articles that teachers can go to on their own time. So there's like a model lesson, if they know they're gonna teach something and they want to see a model lesson of that before they teach it, they can look at that. They can learn about a new strategy, find out how, how to use or find a resource in the curriculum that they need, different things like that. So love the teacher support. One thing that into math, well, a big, big deal was a better online component than Go Math had. And even though, because they're also a new curriculum, they're working out some kinks. I know our, our eighth grade teacher, she gave me a list of some feedback, and she said, originally, earlier this year, she couldn't see much specific student feedback or, you know, their data without clicking through every single assignment, and now they've kind of fixed that. And so she just goes in and asks the question, and then they've been very helpful to her to get what she needs from that. The teachers have little games in every unit that they can play or have the kids play in downtime or early finishers type things. There are STEM projects in every unit. So, um, some of these things, honestly, I don't know that many teachers have had a chance to get to because honestly, like with every curriculum, they've put way more in it than you could possibly do. And that's because, you know, it's better to have too much and pick and choose what you'd like to use than, you know, to not have enough and be scrapped. They have professional learning cards for the teachers to talk about different discussions, and being a new curriculum, it's really focused on, you know, the math discussions and problem solving and collaborating and different things like that. Although I know that the three reads was already a strategy our staff was using. But for new teachers that come on board, which is a big deal, you know, they have resources to help them with those. Did you guys want some?
Yeah.
Oh, I brought stuff.
Oh, did you?
Are we, is this our, can we share, like, come up now or?
Oh, sure. Well, yeah, and then I can talk about the data later.
It doesn't matter.
I could just, you know what, I'm almost done.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so from fall to winter benchmarks, I just quickly looked through STAR, which is just third through eighth grade. And I'm gonna give you these now, so if you take one and pass along. Um, I gave you a growth graph for each grade level, grade three to eight. So you see the two, the two little dots? The first dot is just that average for the grade level, the average percentile and standard score. And then the second dot in late January, early February is the sec, the winter benchmark. So as you can see, if you look to the right, you see the seventy-fifth percentile, fiftieth percentile, and twenty-fifth percentile. And obviously, that grows, meaning as their scale score grows, their percentile, if they just stay the same percentile, they're growing. If that makes sense. So, um, it's really neat to look at this over time. This doesn't tell you how many kids are proficient. This just tells you the average score, right, to show you the growth. Um, and then we'll be able to print a new one of these out at the end of the year. And so you can see, um, each grade level is holding pretty well or growing pretty well. Eighth grade looks like about fifty-third to forty-ninth. And then always also considering that. So, did everybody get one?
Yeah.
And so I also just, I looked a little deeper into a different form, but it's not as easy to print because it has all the students names and things, but it just shows you from fall to winter how many points, standard score, the average growth was, and then the percentile rate growth. And like I said, any percentile rate growth is, is great, is above average growth. And you can say, you can see as they grow, it takes a little less and less growth to reach those percent because, you know, the biggest growth is in those younger years. So, um, any question about those? It's just more of a visual. It doesn't give you specific numbers, but it's just. All right, so we'll hear some more information about the curriculum. As we discover this and we'll begin back together as a math team this spring, talking about pros and cons of this new curriculum, what we can do to make a plan for the next year implementation. We continue to, if we find a need or are struggling finding something, we first look at the new curriculum that was bought, and then we can look for supplemental curriculum outside. We also want to walk this a little slowly and make sure that we're all aligned, like, you see the grade levels come up and they're doing the same thing. And we want that to be, you know, true as we align it vertically and horizontally, that we're we're in line with what supplements we're using. And then, even though this is STAR and it's one data point, we always look at several things, and we've been talking about this in the school improvement plan, you know, we have STAR in the web, S back data, but we also have classroom data, and we have progress monitoring and lots of different things that we look at, but I just give you one piece for now. We also try to compare the same group of kids over time, rather a grade level against another grade level because you have those different groups of kids. I think I heard third grade is a particular grade with a large group of special education students. Is that true?
Yeah.
Third grade is also the group that was in kindergarten when COVID happened. And, you know, so we are not only trying to teach a new curriculum that's to their grade level standards, we're also trying to fill and, you know, keep pushing them forward. Any question? Good, I'm done. You guys get to go.
All right, I'm back. I'll just keep it brief since, you know, who else to go, but I thought I would just, Terry kind of presented some of the maybe, and I'm gonna present a couple of challenges with the curriculum. So this is a first grade lesson that we just recently did. And for reference, our standard is one dot M B T dot three, which is compared two, 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 two-digit numbers based on the meaning of the tens and ones digit, and then record the results of comparisons with the greater than equal to or less than symbol. So those are, that's what the standard says we're working on, comparing the numbers and using those symbols, which would be questions four through twelve is like really what we want them to do in first grade. So the pages that I copied you, they're, let's see, at the end, we have twenty-four questions, and this is on your own section. And this is not a realistic.
And they're first graders.
Or six or seven-year-olds, not by a long shot. I have one kid who is working at a third grade level. And he cannot do this because he cannot read. He's in a reading mastery group, but he works really high in math. He cannot do this because he can't read it. So that's a barrier with a lot of math programs. Our old math was that way, too. There was just lots of reading with it, and that was something we wanted to really look for, but probably hard to come by at this point. But if you just like look at number two, that the critical thinking and reasoning needed to complete that problem is so far, like, I have to read it a couple of times, and I'm like, wait, wait. So they vote at school for a president. Kim gets fifty-two votes. Jamie gets thirty-two. Ed gets more votes than Jamie, but fewer than Kim. How many votes does Ed get? They're like, I do not care. Mind you, the standard is we are comparing numbers using greater than, less than, or equal to symbols. That's not what we're doing here, and I'm all for like a couple, you know, in-depth questions, but twenty-four questions on an on-your-own for a six-year-old, like, it's too, it's too much, and a lot of our lessons are like this.
Like, they're not in order either.
No.
They actually flip twenty-nine and thirty-two, but the other ones are, and so kids might just assume they're in order and pick one and.
All right, and so I'm like, okay, let's write Kim under fifty-two so we can hold a place for Kim. And they can't even write that small to even, I'm like, let's hold it, write Jamie under this number. Now we have to get rid of these numbers. It's just, it's too much. Not a single one of my kids and across the first grade group could do this at all. So that's, that's one of our biggest struggles is they cannot do the on-your-own typically ever on their own. So we're constantly, we do whole group every single day, every single lesson, so it's really difficult for them to show the on-your-own because it's just too, it's too hard. And it's about what the standard is. Like, if we're teaching Common Core standards, that's a Common Core standard. All we need is four through twelve to be firm and accurate, but if we're teaching it with fidelity and actually doing it the way it's supposed to be done, it's just not a possibility. So that's just some of the challenges that we're, one of the challenges we're having with it. The other thing.
Just a second, with so many, because we just looked at the scoring, right?
Yeah.
You know, you're kind of, I guess it doesn't have, this doesn't have first grade.
I think it's third and a half.
So if not a single student can get these correct, does it, does that then lead to kind of benchmark scoring? Or are you saying the benchmarks only based on down here, and there's just, there's just like far too advanced?
Yeah, so when we, we aims web test the kids, and an aims web test is like quarter, twenty-five percent of the dip level difficulty is this. So this is just like above, 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 and beyond, in my opinion, if Tanya would agree with that.
Yeah.
The aims web is pretty, I'm not gonna say easy, the aims web is age-appropriate and grade level appropriate. For this, this is not. So what we're using for testing and benchmark testing and data is not
not really related to this at all, so
that's also tricky, but we want to make sure we're providing them what they need to go on to the next grade level.
Which also, and it makes it that much more complicated because they really have the grasp of this.
No.
Then they go to the next grade and it gets a little bit.
And it gets a little harder and then.
And then, yeah, and then they're really in the stew.
Yes.
So since it's a new program, does the, like, does your, does your feedback to this program, like, do they, do they adjust these, you know, kind of materials to kind of try to dial in?
Yeah, so we, one frustration we've had in second grade is our Common Core standard is add and subtract fluently within twenty. And so that is, yes, you can use strategy skills, but that you fluently know those numbers forwards, backwards. And that's pretty weak in this curriculum, and so we have asked and gone to the coaches' corners and all the things, and they provide us with supplemental online resources, and we've been told not to supplement because we just purchased this curriculum, but everything they've sent us is to a different website, or try this, or do this, or that kind of thing. And so our hands are tied to an extent because we've been told not to supplement, so we're not meeting the standard the way we should be unless we supplement, but then we can't supplement. So it's like this roundabout thing of not doing what we know is right for the kids. And so that's been a big frustration, I know, for our team and across at least K four in talking to teachers is that when going to the curriculum and pursuing the avenues, they send you to another website online with games or something like that. And I would say in first grade also, we, that was my other thing I was gonna say, is there is no fluency built into this program at all. We've not run across it at all. I've asked at several trainings, and first and fourth grade got WAGgle to use as an online platform. And at the WAGgle training, I said, is there fluency in WAGgle? And they said, no, there's not. They're just supposed to be getting fluency by working through these problems, but that's not reality. So we, and we have been so restricted on tech this year, which I think is a huge problem that we need to address. And we can, we aren't providing these kids what they need, and you can't say, do flashcards because they're six and they're seven, and they can't self-correct, and I can't do flashcards with eighteen, nineteen, twenty kids by myself to correct them. It's not realistic. There's better mousetraps out there, but we've just been restricted from using anything. So what it comes down to is the kids just aren't getting what they need. So I, as a teacher, you have to decide, okay, do I do it anyways, even though I've been told not to, because I know what the kids need, and I know what the Common Core standards are and what I need to teach. So I close my door and do it, you know, but then they're like, oh, these scores are great. We told you. There was enough fluency in here. Well, okay, no, there's not. So these kids are going to second grade from first, and we've already talked to second grade and like, sorry, there's no fluency in.
First question I have, having not been here last year, what was the review process? Because it seems to me that if this curriculum is so inadequate, why wasn't that identified before it was adopted and purchased?
So the review process was, and I was one of many on the team, but we went, we were given three programs we could review. And we went through, and one was ZERN, and that was all online. You could print the worksheets. That was kind of right away, we said that didn't meet the needs of what we needed for school. So then we were left with two others. And essentially, we were not given an option to like not adopt. We had to adopt because Go Math was going out. As a person on the team and others can speak to this, it wasn't maybe like, yes, this is gonna be the best thing for us. It was, you have to adopt. What are you going to choose? And it was picking what was gonna be the best fit based on that. So we're doing the best we can.
What was the other, so, sorry.
What was the third option? What was that? It was. In vision, that was the third one, in vision, yeah.
There are other math.
Right, and we had brought those to the table, but based on what we were given as a committee, it was those three we could choose from. And so we went through those three, and we filled out the rubrics, and based on the rubrics and the discussion we had, that was the best of the three. But it does have holes. Every curriculum is going to have holes. It doesn't matter which one you adopt. Nothing is perfect. And we understand that, but I think the frustration this year has been, we are identifying a hole. This is a hole. And the tool we've been given to fix or do the hole is no fidelity to the program, or do flashcards. You can't, you know, that's not gonna answer my, you know, concerns for fluency. I'm doing the flashcards. I'm playing the dice games. I'm doing everything I can to get these kids where they are, and it's not being reflected the way we would like to see.
So we've seen. Going back even further, that how the three that were presented to you as a committee, how, how were those three identified?
Because there's. I, I don't know. I was given three. I, I wasn't a part of choosing those three. As a committee, I was given three to choose from.
There were. The thing on my computer. So there were, there was one that was K five only, two that were K eight, and three that were middle school only, because there was a debate about if we wanted to have a different curriculum in the middle school versus the elementary, or if we wanted a full K eight. They were, they were chosen by ed reports, locally used, and the curriculum. You know, just calling around and talking to our co-op, what's used. They were, you know, you don't, I mean, you want to review enough, but you don't want to review too many either. So, I mean, we, we did know right away that ZERN wasn't a way to go, so we dropped.
I don't know why Sarah was ever on the table.
It was actually very high on head reports, but it wasn't gonna meet our needs. Well, they have, yeah, I mean, they have their supplemental part for the practice, but they also have now a printed curriculum. So.
Yeah, we, we did go to Whitefish, because Whitefish has Intma. And we were able to watch and discuss with those teachers that use it. Hands down, probably the most powerful part of the adoption was visiting with them. And they shared those concerns and we shared those concerns and they were relayed. And it was what, I mean, the scores came down to was Intma was the highest rated based on what we had. So.
Did those teachers indicate that they were having to supplement at a high level?
Hundred percent, yeah. And they showed us their supplementations. And that was relayed, I, we brought that back, that they were also supplementing. And that it was not independent. Now, I, it was in Mole Down and it was a ninety-minute lesson. I just personally watched. Those kids sat in their desk for ninety minutes and did not move. They were in their desk for ninety minutes. That clientele did fine and they handled that. We're not sitting in our desks for ninety minutes. I can't sit, I mean, I know that about myself. Second grade, it's ninety minutes plus. And they just sat in their desk the entire time and worked through page by page. So, and our adoption agreement we've done is that five or six years.
Six.
Six years. So there was no other adoption period option, was it six years or?
Envision and Intma was.
I don't want to admit this, because we're the ones that close our doors in fourth grade, but our percentile rank is plus eleven. And we use extra math for fluency and lots of super teacher repetition worksheets.
Do you feel, because I taught Go Math when I taught fifth grade and I had to do the same thing. It was just exactly like this. Did you have to supplement as much with Go Math?
But you just were allowed to.
Correct, yes.
Why aren't, why aren't we allowed to supplement?
Um, we were told we couldn't use Reflex this year. It came down to a cost, Reflex costs money. I think it's a very valuable program. And again, that's another discussion for another day. We were told to avoid tech and not get, you know, as tech-heavy, and so to limit tech use. So that cut a lot of our supplementation. And then extra math is free. And we had started using that, but it didn't, the free version didn't meet the criteria for the kids. Security.
And ours was paying for and through. Because we had already paid for it late last year, so it was paid for.
And then we re-upped it and paid for it out of our own classroom costs.
And two worlds kind of collided at the beginning of this year, because we had virtually no restraints on technology at all. And after COVID, technology was coming in like crazy. And so that this new math and technology kind of collided, because we had to get a rain on what was happening in each classroom. So it was kind of like the perfect storm, like, nobody, anything until we know, you know, what everyone has. So I will say that kind of has led, you know, lent to this issue.
We've swung like completely the other way, where we can't use anything at all, except for WAGgle. I mean, and first graders have nothing but problems with WAGgle. And. First grade that we really should probably get a refund for it. It's been horrible. I mean, I will email Tanya probably at least three to four times, usually a day. And she came in today, because it's so, it's been so bad of kids who have problems on WAGgle. And they're like getting all these error messages. And we're posting in the coaching studio and they're like, oh, try to clear cache or whatever it's called. Try to, it, it's just not very helpful information that their feedback that they're providing and solving any problems. So they're like, oh, we reset that student. Nope, you have the same problem again today. And so he can't do WAGgle, but he's unable to do anything else, because we can't use anything else. You know, we could, there's another program we had to use, I could say, okay, hop on X map, hop on, you know, whatever, to be able to get that math work. Because WAGgle also does not have fluency in it.
So WAGgle was purchased for first and fourth grade to see if that would be some, because it's very expensive, to see if we could use that in all the grade levels. If it was, and, and we're glad we purchased it first and fourth, because they're having a lot of issues with Kinks in the programs. And I was gonna bring my chat to show you, because I go on the coaching suite quite a lot. And I just have, you know, message to them after message, this isn't working, this isn't. And, and they do, to their credit, they are working on it and they turn things around and, okay, now that'll work. But then the next day, there's something else. It's just, it's been pretty constant. I don't, I think fourth grade has had some success with WAGgle, but partly because the kids are older, so they can navigate through some of the troubleshooting.
My kids mix it themselves, or like, I don't know how to fix it. I just push these buttons with it.
So I don't know, I don't, do we have to? I'm not sure about that.
But WAGgle is nice in fourth grade, at least I think for my high-level kids, because it puts them at their level, so they're not held back.
But it does, it's not very independent at that level. So it doesn't give them a thorough explanation of.
Yeah, like multiplying fractions. Teach them how to do it before they can do it on their own.
So Jeff, to also answer your question, the beginning of the year, there's already a lot of requests to do a lot of supplementing, before the curriculum was even really implemented in the classroom and before we, or the teachers had collected any real data. So I had made a directive, I guess you could say, to limit supplementing. Because my concern was that without even trying the curriculum, that what would start out as a supplement would become a supplanting situation. So to supplement something, you realize, oh, there's, there's this one deficit with the curriculum doesn't meet the needs of fluency. So we're gonna bring in a fluency tool. Supplanting is, we don't like the way it addresses whatever, we have another way of wanting to do it. So we just teach it another way, the go-in-the-room-to-close-the-door mentality and do it the way we want, which that's, if, if it gets us the result, which is student achievement, that's fine. But to have maybe the financial investment, or continuing with a training investment. We, and that's why I've asked for feedback at the meeting tonight, is we need to know what, how effective is the curriculum? And if we start off with supplanting and supplementing, you don't get an accurate experience with the actual curriculum itself. And that's why I've asked the question about where, where was the review process? Because I know there are other math curriculums. I know that any curriculum, it doesn't matter if it's math or science or ELA, there's always gonna be gaps that you have to fill. But from what I'm hearing from the practitioners of this curriculum, is there are more, there are more gaps and there are more inadequacies than there are effective pieces. Which should have been, if it's, if the curriculum is that ineffective, why wasn't that identified before the, the PO or the purchase was requested? So we're, we're in a boat, we've faulted the boat, it's not a very good one. So the, the question of, and Tanya and I had a conversation last week about what are some of the challenges and what are some of the ways that we can overcome those challenges? And we're to the point now where teachers have had the, the fidelity experience with the curriculum that we do want to start looking from not just a piece by piece. Everyone goes into a room and closes the door and does their own thing. But what is most effective in general in, in bringing in supplementary materials? So the, the feedback that you're getting from the teachers, that they've been limited on technology and that they've been limited on supplementing, that, that part is absolutely true. Because when we get to this point, they need to be able to give you and us, everyone, an accurate representation of the good, the bad, and the ugly of what this curriculum does. If we see, and we've discussed this before, if we see a dip in test scores, that's to be expected anytime you implement a new curriculum. No one is gonna be chastised or given a hard time because their scores aren't what they usually are. We, we just, we need an accurate representation of what, what this curriculum does for us. I am not beyond calling the people at Intma and saying, you sold us a false bill of goods. And.
I agree, I think we should express our.
But we have to have an accurate representation of, this is why this is inadequate. This is why you're not needing the, the agreement that we had with you as a purchaser. I've gotten feedback from teachers that the training is not very effective, that even the trainers have come in and said, oh, just figure it out and supplement. Yeah. Okay, is that because our check cleared? Do you feel comfortable telling us that now? And the WAGgle piece, the challenges with it, with the technology, that is impacting probably our media students because it's the intervention component. So those students do not have an intervention piece. And then just, just the level of tech support that it's been available. And I asked the question, because I know Kat's working very hard on maintaining adequate technology for us. Where's the problem? Is it, is it something that we're not doing? Do we need to address it in-house? Or is it something that's on their server, that's on there? And consistently, the answer is, it's on there, yeah. So that's the administrative context to the directive that's been given to the, the teachers. Because if they ask us, well, what does your benchmark data say? Well, our benchmark data says our kids are doing pretty well, but it's because our teachers aren't using your program.
Yeah, right. A few thoughts, like, one, obviously, they're gonna sell you on something to show you the good things, right? And kind of hide the things that they know are already a struggle. How responsive do you, do we know that they are about hearing feedback and making changes over time? Like, if, if they come back next year with a revised program, that's actually improved some of these things, then that feels a little bit better. But if they're gonna do nothing, but give us the same thing for six years, it's.
I, I do think they're fairly responsive. The problem with that is that it's so much work to get. Like, for instance, there was a video that needed to be uploaded. The video, the WAGgle was not responding the way it should. So the teacher tried to upload the video. Well, they're uploaded the video, they had Kinks in their system, it went upload. So I had to take it to Kat and she had to do all her technological magic on it. And then the video would upload. And then I got it to WAGgle and then they started working on it. And then the teacher, I said, well, what about the fact that we can't upload the videos? Because this is how you're telling us to get you what's wrong, so you can fix it. And she said, oh, yeah, I couldn't get my video to upload either, so I, I just put it here instead. So it's not that they're not responsive. There's a lot of errors in the program, just flat out, the math is wrong on a, on a chart, or the math is wrong on a worksheet. And so we're supposed to take pictures and send that, yeah.
Questions of my kids when they bring home homework, too. And it's like, I'm not a math teacher, I'm not a math PhD either, but this needs to be written better, like, easier to actually see what the problem you're supposed to pull out of it looks like. And even at the eighth grade level with my eighth grader, I've been like, well, why didn't they just say this, right? Like, I'm interpreting it that way for you, but here you go. And he's like, oh, that's easy now. But like.
So they're responsive, but it's a lot of work to get to the point where they're able, you know what I mean? It's a lot of work for the teachers. And we are trying and I've asked teachers maybe to send more to me and I'll send it to them, because I, you know, can take that time out of my day. But it's just a lot of work to get to that response.
You know, I remember we were discussing this back when we gave them money for this huge program, a tremendous amount of money. It's just making me very angry right now. One of the big things was, you know, what you're saying is that we were coming off the COVID thing and we wanted to get the kids off the technology. And parents were screaming that they didn't have worksheets. They had, were expected to work on the computer and they didn't like that. And one of the big common threads, the big pluses for this program was they had an extensive workbook that, that was going to be included. You know, I mean, maybe we, maybe we overlooked a lot of the other things, because they had the paper that everybody was calling for. And that was included in the program at that time. I mean, I'm just, to our, to our credit, I mean, looking back now, that was short-sighted. But that was what we were looking at, is some paper, because that's what everybody was craving at that point in time. Then you look at this paper and then, I mean, shoot, for second graders. I couldn't even understand. Anyway.
We talked a lot about the ease of, the ease of utilization of the program to different students in your classroom. We talked a little bit about that and how this program actually offered a lot of those things. Is that, after the fact, now, is it true or not?
Um, they, at least from what I've seen, they offer, kind of like Go Math had some of it, too. They have a reteach worksheet and an enrichment worksheet, or a practice page. But at least in second grade, we're seeing at first grade that they even have those practice problems at the bottom without words. It's like, wow, that's awesome. Because by the time they get to second grade, we don't, we maybe get two, three problems of just the problems. The rest is completely words, you have to read through it. And then off to the side, do the problem. So even the enrichment pages or practice, yeah. Yeah, is not a lot of.
Like, we just did two-digit addition and subtraction and in Go Math, you would have three lessons of nothing but practice, three lessons. Right. And we just, we didn't even get that. It was maybe three problems and then word problems, where they would then have to pull out the numbers. And then, again, off to the side. Yeah, so you lost everybody.
Well, it's the same way in kindergarten. It's kindergarten. And it's, so there's, again, zero on your own, because they can't read those sentences. So everything has to be read to them. Kindergarten standard is fluently add and subtract within five. And so it's report card time, and so I gave them a sheet. And they can do the problems all sorts of directions if I'm reading it to them. But when I give them the sheet with just an equation on it, they've never seen it before. They haven't even seen, two plus three equals blank, because it's all just words and filling circles and lines. So.
So you go back to the old days.
We haven't, we're sticking to.
And I think we all are. Fourth grade, too, we're, we're still doing every, we're doing the lessons. We go through the book, we do the lesson together, or break up and do, however, everybody does it. And then we do, we have been supplementing, but we are using the curriculum every day and we aren't going through the lesson.
We still teach lesson.
In that, so you're giving it a chance in that one. You're not just a bad against.
Oh, no, we've taught it every day. Yes. But we just like, they teach long division one day, well, then we're gonna practice the next three days with worksheets of long division. Because one day, even they're not gonna learn long division.
Two problems.
That was literally a one-day lesson.
One day at the end of the module and then the next day was test. Yeah, plus two other standards, too.
I do like the critical thinking aspect. I've taught sub and third and fourth grade, and I really do think that it makes them think critically in different ways. And I mean, that's a big plus for the program, I think.
It does. With kids that are struggling, that's, that's beyond therapy.
Because you teach them like key words, you know, you see more. Most of the time in the second grade problem, if you see more, you're going to add. And these, it's more, half the time is like more than so-and-so, but then you have to subtract to figure out really how much so-and-so has. So more, you gotta keep reading on. So we used to just box more and know, okay, more is our keyword. We know we're gonna, and we have to box more than da-da-da-da-da-da-da. What does that sentence mean? Okay, that sentence means this. So we're gonna go back now and we can perform the operation.
Well, and then just these examples, there's more and less and, or more and fewer, or more and greater, or less and greater, following the same problem. You can't just pick out your keywords and go on either.
No, yeah.
Yeah. I'll be interested over time, too, to see how this scaffolds from grade to old to grade level and what that looks like, because we've encountered a few issues in that way, like first grade, one of our first lessons was doubles plus one and doubles minus one. And I'm like, well, we haven't taught doubles, which in Go Math, we taught doubles, like a whole chapter of doubles. And then we did doubles plus one, doubles minus one. And that's big for them to have in second grade, it's a strategy to fluently, you know, be able to do some things. So I'm like, they must have taught it, this program must have doubles in kindergarten. And so I combed through those kindergarten books and they never mentioned doubles a single time in kindergarten. And at first grade, they've. And at first grade, they start as doubles plus one, doubles minus one. And our kids are like, we don't know the doubles. And I'm like, oh, gosh. So they just don't know, like, it's really hard for them to conceptualize that when we haven't taught that that base. So I'm curious. You know, how, what other, what other standards that we'll see that with.
But the good news is we're all really excellent teachers.
Yeah.
Absolutely. To this this year, but we all know what we need to do and what we're gonna do and then we're gonna do it. I mean, that's a lot of money we're gonna make at work for sure. But it would be nice if we could get some money back for the things that absolutely don't work.
I was gonna ask you about that, you know, I I don't know, do I remember twenty-three thousand, Justin, that we paid for this program? It seems that that sticks in my.
I was like, no. And it was, it was not significantly different than what we were paying for before, but it was a lot of money.
It was, we have to come up with that upfront again, because we had all this other money. Did I remember questioning that? No, no problem, we got extra money coming out of here. And so, um, did we pay them the full amount? And now is that for six years then?
Well, but don't we have to pay every year for new paper materials? We don't have to buy student workbooks every year?
Okay, I thought it was everything, but.
Twenty thousand for six years.
I don't think it's twenty thousand.
It was more than that.
For everything, all six years, I think waggle, I mean, the program.
I think we should try to get our money either back on waggle or stop the subscription if it's a six-year subscription.
I do have some pros to end on, if we want to end on that note.
They better be really committed.
Let me see how I can spin them. Some things that second grade does really like about Intermath is with Go Math, you know, it was separated by chapters. And so it, within a chapter, there was maybe twelve lessons, some took two days, review test, intro day, you're looking at a month before you're doing the formative assessment now, I mean, cumulative assessment, all the things. We're doing it throughout the day, we know where the kids are. One nice thing with Intermath is the, uh, they do modules, not chapters. And the modules are shorter, so we are checking in with students much more frequently. Yes, that means more testing, but the Go Math tests were six pages, sometimes six to eight pages. I mean, it was like flipping through a book, whereas this is maybe six problems, a lot of them are multiple choice. So that's been good for us to get that, you know, data right there. And then instead of just seeing on a whiteboard or a worksheet that they've done with us, we have that. And so we've appreciated that within Intermath. Um, another just pro, just for fun, pro. With Go Math, you get a big thick book. And for K one, two, to hand them this big thick book, and then you spend half the lesson, oh, it's page thirty-five, thirty-five. So every year before school started, teachers, we would sit and rip out every lesson, staple, tear, staple hours. I got staple shoulder, all the things. This, I don't have to do that anymore because I have a little module, it's maybe three total. We can easily find the page number and move on. So another great pro. I could keep digging if you really want some more pros to end on, but just the positive, the modules. The shorter modules.
You did mention multiple choice, but they're the crafty ones that are like, there could be possibly more than one.
Are more than one, I don't know, if it's two or three or one, but we're getting. It's like that, and that has been, that has been a progression that has happened across the board as a result of the the Common Core assessments have, it's one of the things that they brought in is there may be more than one answer. I mean, that's, that's been a frustration from the beginning. And curriculums are introducing that concept because you don't want a kid to sit down to a test.
Yeah.
And that's the first time they see it. And and also, I mean, that's the answer in life, sometimes there are more than one answer. So it's it's not fun.
So I guess just as kind of a follow-up from our perspective, are we at the point where we reconsider, you know, providing some sort of supplementation program that works for everybody?
So my, my thinking, just based off the conversation that I had last week with Tanya is, you know, we're, we're coming into having had a full year of experience with the the current curriculum, the teachers are learning the good, the bad, the ugly about it. And then we look at having a committee before, maybe after spring break to be more intentional about identifying what are the actual deficits in the curriculum. And then identify a single intervention source. What I would prefer to avoid whenever it comes to the technology is, okay, so we have our curriculum wobble on. And then we have this intervention that is for this, and then we have this intervention that is for that. There are intervention programs that are pretty comprehensive. I would rather we evaluate and identify the most comprehensive intervention program we can have. And then we look into that for for next year. I I've just, I've seen it with my own child when she came home from kindergarten and she had five different username and passwords because they were using five different online programs with kindergartners. And I think, so there's the the user impact aspect of multiple programs. There's also the fidelity in data, it's okay. So which one of these three things actually worked? But be thoughtful about identifying an appropriate and comprehensive intervention program and that ideally one that would have the enrichment component as well. So that covers an entire spectrum of students who are struggling, have access to things that are on their level. But students that are advanced also have things that are kind of pushed out and challenged down. That is just kind of above and beyond. In order to make that educated decision, we need to know what are the failures of Intermath. Which the teachers are gathering and they will know that because, like Joe said, they're all great teachers. They know, they know how to teach, they know what good instruction looks like.
Does this intervention program cost money?
Most of them will, if it's any.
Then what we do about that money, we pay these people, I hate to keep going back to that.
So that's, that may be, I don't, I don't think we could go to them right now and say, hey, we don't like this, we want to refund.
So we'll have both, we'll be paying for an intervention program.
I think waggle, we can have a discussion when, you know, we tried this out for a year with two grade levels. We were very intentional about that, we wanted to see how it worked before we purchased it for everyone. It's not going well. We don't want waggle, we want to refund on waggle. We're exploring other options. Think we go into year two, exploring those other intervention options and see if that does form a good balance for instruction where we have our our core curriculum is the Intermath. And then we have an adopted intervention curriculum. And we see how how they play on each other and what that results in. If we're still struggling at the end of year two, then that's, that's when we start making, or I start making those phone calls to Intermath and saying, this, for the investment that we've made, you're not fulfilling it. Uh, if we told them right now we wanted our money back, they'd laugh in our faces and said, you've had it for a year.
Yeah, but I do think it's important for us to, like, once this, like, list of deficiencies is lined out to make them very aware that, you know, that this, this program has significant gaps. Because they should be able to presumably, like, over time, it's not like they did it. And then they're never gonna change it. They should be able to make some sort of enhancements to their program.
And that's so part of my concern from what I'm hearing is some of the the foundational things, like just the user ability of it, they should have those things ironed out. That shouldn't, with an established curriculum producing company, they should not be having these user level errors. If we can't access the program in twenty twenty-three, that that is not a good thing. I've worked with current intervention curriculums that one company faulted another company and they kind of pieced small things together. And because of that, there were lots of issues. This shouldn't be the case. The other concern is hearing that some of the the anchor charts are just wrong, some of the math is just wrong. That. What, what is the peer review process that happens before a product is is put out?
It's, you should like get a calculator.
For what? So maybe we send them a bill and say, so this is the amount of time that my staff has spent correcting the identified mistakes.
Exactly.
So here's their daily rate, here's the time they spent. But I do agree, we start having those conversations about what are the challenges that we, you know, that we have faced this year. And then, and start kind of laying that groundwork because if we, if we're sitting in this position next year and we're considering having that conversation of we want to break our contract, that doesn't need to be the first time that they've heard how dissatisfied we are.
Well, especially you, a company like this is going to be incredibly reliant on schools referrals for this program. And it obviously doesn't seem like anybody's really excited about it right now. So I mean, from their standpoint, that's a good, that's gotta be a huge.
Well, and that's, that's another point, we throw some of the influence that we have around and if if the West Valley teachers as a collective are saying, this isn't a good program.
Exactly.
Then, you know, in the valley, that probably means something now. Get outside and other places and we're, we're just another speck on the map, but companies don't like to lose customers. And ultimately, and I, this is what I think is so important about understanding these companies. They don't care about student achievement the way that we care about student achievement. We have to look at our kids, we have to look at our families, we have to look at the people that they're gonna be whenever they leave us. The people who are developing curriculum, all they care about is how much money they make at the end of the quarter. They are in a money-making business, that is their goal. It is, they are not doing this out of the goodness of their hearts. Which I think makes us a little hoistier.
I, you know, through the way you need to go back to, you know, we're really here for kids. Look at this, you know, I, we changed the program and we expected the quality of the math education to go down. I don't remember ever being presented with that. That once you changed it, I mean, we're talking.
It's a curriculum, so it's an implementation dip and that is, it's normal with.
Seems to me that at the elementary, definitely, you know, when they're teaching one and one equals two, that you should be able to at least maintain. Not at, yeah. But we really haven't, the only place beside it was eighth grade.
Well, we often see the dip in the January scores, so it's not unusual to see them cruising along okay in class and then in January show a dip on older kids. And it's, it's a, and then they bounce back up on the spring scores. So. Some of that is too, the way they lay it out, like, we're teaching different standards at different times. As opposed to Go Math laid it out differently, like, well, by the end of the year, we'll get through all the same secondary standards. But when we go to the winter benchmark test, we may not have covered time and money within the math. So when they get a question of time and money, they're not gonna be able to relax and they're gonna dip. Whereas with Go, yeah, whereas with Go Math, we'd already taught time and money and, you know, or vice versa, that was just one example, so.
And the older they get, the much harder it is to influence that. The older they get, the more harder it will get. Because a lot of kids are at the range that they're at. And we're still struggling with those oldest kids at eighth grade, probably my most affected by the whole shutdown. So.
I just wanted to say the supplement things we were talking about. What you guys use?
We used, we used to use Reflex.
And that's about three or four thousand dollars, right?
I remember it was two thousand, but that's only so.
I just wanted to give you guys an idea, like, it's not that big temper.
No, does it be interventions we're talking about?
Yeah. Give you a little idea how much that costs.
And just for some feedback for you guys, because I know you've asked for mouth purchases. I've said no to purchases pretty much across the board, wherever it's been, science, ELA. Yeah, no one has been immune, um, unless there was some kind of background to to decide otherwise. And that's just been the unfortunate nature of the uncertainty for this year. So it's not just about, just has adventurous math. And, you know, that if it's two thousand dollars per grade level and we're looking at purchasing it for five grade levels, K through four, that's ten thousand dollars. And then the science department wants some type of purchased additional curriculum as well, and then social study wants something purchased. So whereas two thousand dollars at a grade level is is not a significant amount. When you start compounding all of the requests, uh, it does for companies. I have a purchase on my, my desk right now for over eleven hundred dollars for additional curriculum materials. So that it adds up.
Okay, well. We have a lot to pick. Oh, thank you very much for coming in and bringing that up. Very necessary, I mean, you know, honest, it's good to hear honest, honesty, people coming up soon when they think about this program. So thank you for your honesty and for your study of this. Now, going forward. Um, Tina, did you want to do a principal's report or do we?
I lost my notes on all this, I can share a little bit.
Because, yeah.
I'll hear you really fast. We, I don't know whether you covered, did you cover everything, Richard? You might have covered it all, but we're at the end of the trimester and grading, you know, they're, they posted the grades, their cards go home this week. And I work with a lot of really hardworking people, students and staff. This is a tough time of year to come through, January, February, March. And I read on one of my principal groups, don't make any career decisions in March. Thank you. They're working really hard, it's, it's a, they're in the meat of what happens in the school year. And it, you know, and then to have this long winter, and eighth grade the other day slammed his locker and was like, it's snowing again. He slammed it really hard when he said, and then he realized, I was there, I know, I thought it's it. I'm so sorry, it's still snowing. And so I'm just proud of everybody that they're, they're just plugging along and working really hard. Looking forward to those things that I talked about, that, um, just they've got field trips coming up, things to look forward to, the promotion ceremony. The winter dance got moved, it's now a spring dance and social that will be happening, um, in April. So we've had a lot going on with Mrs. Thurman. Seems like we collided the, the registrations for the high school with their own planning. And then with the end of the trimester and kids picking their courses and things here, so. You move that back and also, well, also, you know, we don't have any outside access right now, and some of these classes are, are pretty, um, pretty large. And, I think, you know, something I'm forgetting right now, I had a list of. Anyways, I just have gotten some questions, just so everybody knows, there are no cameras in our bathrooms at West Valley Schools. Kids are asking if there are cameras in the bathrooms, so, no cameras in the bathrooms. Question right now. Student, from the student group and their meeting this month from the room reps. Um, just more questions about what there is to do outside for middle schoolers. And, um, there's something to think about in the future, there, it was, the room reps talked quite a bit about that, about what they can do at recess time. And we, we don't have a lot of Paris this year and a lot of Paris support, so I haven't been able, you know, and I'm working with lunch detentions, I haven't been able to open up like the game room or other things, you know, even just to give them a break inside. And, you know, and the classes are running throughout most of the day in the library. So just thinking about that is ideas come up that some of the student concerns are, what can they do? And it's a pretty short time, but we've been thinking, you know, if we're on this campus forever, like, could there ever be some covered areas for playgrounds or, you know, it comes up with staff too, that, but that was big on their agenda to share with us.
Sounds like the same story at home, too. What am I gonna do? Ruby now, inside.
For sure. Um, I guess the last thing is that the fifth grade position that had opened up, Cindy could share on this, but it, it didn't fill, like, for the certified long-term set. So there's still a guest teacher in the classroom and I've been there teaching, uh, English language arts with her and science and social studies in the late afternoon and setting that up. And the students are going out with the other three teachers for math, the other three fifth grade teachers. And the students are going out with the other three teachers for math, the other three fifth grade teachers, the, the class is small enough at that time because some students go to special education. So it doesn't necessarily overload those other three classes, we've divided them up from that. And that's working okay. And reduce the class size to twenty, that's manageable. And for someone on a substitute time to be able to grade and assess things. And, yeah, so let me see these curriculums that you're talking about, I was gonna say, if you go to the tier two math too, it has a nice cut and dry sometimes, I look at that. And, but definitely see, you know, to that end, that when, when they implemented the core, almost all of the text became a reading curriculum. Almost all of them, they're really heavy on the word on the math text of the different companies. Yeah, I remember being that as a teacher, wow, you have to know how to read really well. So, I see that, but that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, since again, it's two forty.
Okay, um. So just a couple, so I, this is kind of been my practice, if, I only bring what I can fit on a sticky note. When I was a principal and would go to admin meetings, my superintendent would always ask, okay, what's on your sticky note, because I only ever bring what I fit on a sticky note. Which is another reason why I do y'all's Friday's emails, because it keeps, it keeps me to a sticky note and not like expanding to one of those big sticky notes. And, so, a couple, so we'll start with the easy thing. Are the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch who provides our community mental health services. They had asked about using our board this summer to transport students, so they still provide services through the summer. But I just wanted to get some feedback from the board about exploring a contract with them that would give them that permission, it wouldn't just be a, yeah, y'all take it, here's the keys. We have some type of contractual agreement. But otherwise. Transportation is a barrier for many of those students to be able to have access and they also try to get the kids out in the valley and do different things during the summer. And so would the board consider at the next meeting? Considering a contractor for the summer? For the Yellowstone Boys and Girls.
That seems fine to me, yeah.
How many kids are we talking about? Um, I can't remember off the top of my head, they probably filled it up, it carries seven, they're our students.
Okay.
In the past, they were able to use the van that were, we haven't gotten rid of it yet, but it's still not a safe vehicle. And what I had kind of just in discussion, talked to them about is basically they're, they're gonna pay their expenses, so.
Insurance included.
Right, so we'll add, we'll include that in whatever contract we work out, a percentage of insurance, their, their gas. I don't necessarily want to charge them mileage, because I think that that's, that's excessive, they're operating under limited budgets as well. But coming up with something that would be reasonable and appropriate to give them the resource that they need.
So they, we'd be giving them as a, as a. Vehicle and then what we'd be, we'd be out repairing maintenance on it because, you know, we're wearing our, our vehicle out. But they'd be paying insurance and gas and oil, whatever.
We'd probably have like a maintenance fee. But I don't see them going through like a set of tires over the summer.
No, are they gonna, they gonna be using it every day?
That's a great question, I don't know, I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, that would seem, if they're gonna be on the road with it every day. From eight to three or whatever, that's one thing, if they're gonna use occasionally, maybe even two, three times a week, that's a different.
Right.
A different scene, I think, and where are they gonna be going, are they gonna be taking it down to Poland, are they gonna be taking it up to glacier? Or are we talking, I'm just taking it over to everywhere.
I think they stay pretty local, but I can find out the level of use.
I think, I think was the big thing we need to consider, rather than just say, yeah, take it wherever you want.
And that, I think, I, I prefer for things to be in writing and that'd be part of a contract that we have with them is. You know, the, the level of use, the frequency kind of a range, you know, you're not gonna go any further than.
How many, yeah, how many miles do they expect? I hate to be that way, I mean, because you like to think, yeah, it, you know, it's great for the kids to go in the rain, but then we end up with them. Repair maintenance, but at the end, that's beyond what we.
And, yeah, thank you for this, oh, yeah. Yeah, so we'll work on kind of an idea of what their, their use will be and just kind of put some things in writing and bring that to the next meeting to review them. By the meeting after that, we should have something agreed to.
You gotta get it by Maryland, so.
So, one of the big topics right now at West Valley and across the state is, is public educator insurance. It's a conversation that we're having in negotiations, it's a conversation that's being held at the state level. And I'm not gonna go into any great detail, but it's. Topic I want to introduce because it's gonna be reoccurring from now probably throughout the end of the year. And insurance benefits offered by the school district is something that impacts every single employee, one way or another here. Either employees who don't want it have to take it. Have employees who are taking it who don't necessarily like it, but they don't have any other options. But I sent out a survey to the entire staff and received sixty responses, so that's probably about sixty percent. And we will discuss this in greater detail another time, but it has been good feedback, so some highlights. Of, and this is sixty-one responses, so I don't know how is it sixty-one when they're. All right, there you go, Google. So I have other options for health insurance coverage, so this would be someone who has maybe through a spouse or Medicaid, Medicare, or something else. Thirty-nine percent say no, we are their only option for health insurance coverage. About sixty-one percent have, they have other options that they could explore. And then if given the choice, I would. So, we have about seventeen percent who said that they would continue with the current provider or basically continue with whatever the district option takes available. About forty-six percent, forty-five point eight, say that they would consider staying with the district plan if we had a better one available to them. And about thirty-seven percent say that they would opt out regardless, because probably they have spouses, got a pretty sweet deal. And then there are just some different questions, what are your greatest needs, feedback about the current plan. What we've done in exploring options is, so, and I, and Mark Festival represented the Teachers Association. Met with representatives from Paint West, who is our, they, they cover some of our insurances. They are shopping around a health plan for us and should be getting us that information back this week. We are also, Cecily and I are meeting with the insurance consortium that we are currently associated with, so next week. So, we, we are doing what we can at the district level to try to be as competitive as possible. We're approaching this from very much of a consumer standpoint of, we have a large body of people who pay for insurance. We should be able to shop around and get them the best rates possible whenever it comes to, to help insurance. So that is, is a discussion that's ongoing. I don't know what the legislature's doing, I haven't, I'm a little bit behind on the updates. There is a bill. That is being considered that would establish a trust. We all know that the state has the surplus in funds. This bill would take sixty million dollars of seed money to establish this health trust for public school employees. And last I saw, but it was still in committee, it has not been tabled. I emailed every person who voted no on their little first go around. I got one response from someone who said that it is still very much being considered, that they were just not fond of the language that was being used. So, that may still be a possibility at the state level. No one at the state level has given me an answer as to why teachers can't join the state, the, the public plan that exists. So, a representative at OPI was slip in a meeting that she pays twenty dollars a month for health insurance. Because she's able to join the, the state. Health insurance plan. And, point of reference for myself and just my kids, my out of pocket after the district's, which is in its portion, is still over six hundred dollars. To have myself and my kids cover, I don't even cover my husband. It becomes unaffordable, it's already unaffordable. So, if I'm at my level looking at my insurance from that standpoint, if you're a brand new teacher. Or if you're a fairly young teacher with a young family. That's a significant concern. The informal response that I've gotten from people is, has varied from teachers are unhealthy in general, because there's a lot of us, and teachers have babies. A lot of teachers are females and the cost of maternity care and increased family sizes, that's an increase expense on, on that insurance fund, so. So anyhow, we will see where that goes, hopefully as a district we're able to, to find something that is more competitive. The other concern with the current insurance is. Unless you're hospitalized, it's really worthless. It, it covers really significant catastrophic type things, but for just if they, I have a cold. Well, you're gonna chokes a Gatorade, Tylenol, something for, I'm gonna go to the doctor, because. So much has to be paid out of pocket before the insurance will kick in and the deductibles are pretty high. So, insurance is pretty dismal at this point.
I would encourage that whoever you're looking at for insurances, allow options for employees to choose. And I know it's gonna be very hard to get any of them to even consider that, but, but then they'll find, we're not gonna use you if you don't allow our employees to have options, because some people might. Want a lower priced catastrophe policy, because they have other ways of getting certain care. And others would like, no, I'm on a really comprehensive low deductible policy, because I don't wanna have to worry about certain things, because I have these things going on, but.
And what's currently available, I mean, we have options. There's three plans that are made available, they're all terrible. I, because my family is pretty healthy, we don't have any kind of long going on, you know, ongoing type things that have to be maintained. We have the high deductible to have the lower premium. But if, if you are someone who has been ongoing health issue, you're, you're diabetic or you have a kid who's asthmatic, goes to the doctor a lot or. Some type of other just long term, ongoing illness. Insurance is a killer, so. And then I also, like I said, I think of it from a retention standpoint, or to, to attract teachers for recruitment purposes. That's something, when I was twenty-two and I first started teaching, I didn't think anything about insurance, because it was just covered by the state, Mississippi was a great program. But here in Montana, not so much, so.
Those are crazy, even on the good ones.
Yes, so we are exploring that. So. Just to, to throw it out there, so negotiations are going on right now between the district and the Teachers Association. One of the contracts that has been discussed and that is. At kind of my reflecting on, will be removed from the teacher's contract is the technology director. So, when. Originally, when school districts had technology directors, they also taught. That maybe we're in the classroom for seventy-five percent of the day and then the last half of the day, they went around and fixed everybody's printer. Over time, as, as technology has changed, and also here specifically a size has changed, that percentage has started to slide where. The, the technology director, instead of it just being part of the person's day, it has become the entirety of the day. There are additional responsibilities that go above and beyond the seven thirty to three thirty timeframe, definitely beyond the scope of a one hundred eighty-seven day school year. Our technology director also supervises others as, who are technology mentors. And whereas the work she does is highly supportive for our students, she doesn't actually work with kids. So, I think, given just the way contracts are formatted, that it would be more appropriate to offer her a contract. That is more in line with an administrative contract than a teacher's contract. So, just to throw that out there, that will be on the radar for discussion later. We talked last month about services offered by NTSBA, you will notice that they are not actually, I don't want this agenda. We are, so last week. I became aware of some additional information of other. Law offices that may provide similar services that we need and may do it at a better price. My kind of evaluation of what NTSBA offers is that they are very heavily focused in advocating and being involved at the congressional standpoint. And that's, that's great, but is that really what we want to pay for? So, Cecily and I are gonna check into some other options, and again, it's a matter of shopping around, are we giving? The best thing for our buck? And we'll hopefully be bringing that to the next board meeting and being able to make a recommendation, or at least bringing in a couple of options and we look at and decide, okay, let's. Let's choose this for our policy maintenance and just cursory everyday report advice. But we wanna be able to make a good choice. So. So the levy. What I am. Planning to do is later this month, have and start advertising after this meeting, so starting tomorrow. A community forum, kind of a roundtable discussion and advertise it in as many ways and as many formats as possible. And bring people in. Who live in West Valley and pay taxes here and have discussions about what does our, how far does our current budget get us, so the preliminary numbers were released a couple of weeks ago. We're getting a whopping fifteen thousand dollars more next year than we did this year. That's not gonna go very far. I think. Giving the community as much information as possible, what, what would next year look like if all we had was the base budget? What will next year look like if we have the base budget plus schoolwide title one funding? What would next year look like if we have a base budget, title one funding and a potential levy? Talking to the community or have the opportunity at least to discuss the things that we did by those programs that teachers were told not to. Hands-on materials that teachers were told not to. The fact that our paras are significantly underpaid when looked at in the greater scope of the job market. Bringing in information like Richard presented earlier and showing the real impact of. Not being financially sound enough to offer competitive wages for both paras and for substitutes, so. My impression of the community here is that the community appreciates facts and numbers and this is the reality of, of what finances and instruction looks like at school. So, it, it's not gonna be warm and fuzzy, we're not gonna have, you know, a circle and a talking stick that we pass around. But. I want people to be as informed as possible and get feedback, potentially, it'd be really nice, form a levy committee out of that community. Maybe to move that process forward, but. I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't have the opportunity to hear what are the financial needs and what are the impacts of, of our deficits. On the school, so that is, that's, that's where I'm at in planning for and thinking about. Running a levy. Does the board have any? Questions, is there anything that you think that would be of value that we would want to be? Questions? Is there anything that you think that would be of value that we would want to be sure to include? And at that type of meeting?
We we have it down here in the in the um in the school. Whatever several whatever in the middle or either we have it in the gym or what do you think?
My thinking is the 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 middle school commons here. As far as a venue, we may end up having more than one meeting. I wouldn't mind having an off campus. Venue to have this conversation as well. Some people won't come because it's in the school. They feel like I I don't have a kid at the school. I'm not involved in the school, but. If we, you know, had some other location.
I'm trying to think of one up here.
At the same, yeah, about an hour into. But so that's we will definitely post an event here and have conversations. I want to start putting things out, start collecting feedback. People, you know, I can get them to email me in advance. And start having conversations. I want to do that. My thinking is is that we will run the levy election and if. The community says no, I don't want to still look back and say that, well, we didn't inform them well enough. We didn't tell them what was going on. They didn't have an accurate picture or for people to be able to say the school never told us what was going on. Well, we tried, but did you come? Well, we can use that as well, put things there. But so Cecilia posts the board meetings in the newspaper. There's like an events section. Contacting the paper to see, you know, can we run an ad, you know, because that. I don't know who reads the little events section to see what's coming up and if people are reading that, you know, what what keywords? Are they looking for?
Yeah, or just, I don't know if you could do like what like the reader board or some sort of signage or something that we could do because, you know, you get a ton of traffic.
Yeah, I was gonna say constantly have like a, at least for elementary news class dojo and I know that would only be teacher or parents.
Right. I feel like the parent audiences, I mean, they're very accessible. We can get information to them. I I want the information to go further than the parents because if if this weren't a matter, that was just strictly up to vote to the parents. Then we could be in pretty good shape.
Like if we could get an article written for the beacon or the interlake, you need to get to. Like out of state people who've paid a lot of money in West Valley and they don't have kids here. The the information on why it matters that your neighbors' kids are well educated. How it affects your home values and your community, you know, something like that where. Those people are.
And you know, I think as a general rule, people are moving now rich and they, you know, they they may have. Money that they would be willing and they, we don't have really a whole lot of trouble when they do any of these fundraisers for anything. Somebody that has a fire or a sick kid or whatever, they always come up with God's money for these people. So I'm thinking we need to tap into that resource. What's that?
We need a big donor just to say here.
People, I mean, she million dollar, they're looking places for their money, right?
We're writing a tax letter.
Right here. Maybe we could get, I don't have any connections. They might have talked to you and like in the beacon and see what they could come up with. You're thinking of doing this after the um spring break.
Before spring break. Have an initial meeting.
Week in this month, right? So we're talking immediately.
Yeah, sure, why not?
I'm fine with that. I mean, we're talking about.
So I think and and that's not going to be, that won't be the only meeting. That won't be the opera, the only opportunity. I think we, like Richard said, you know, what he brought tonight was was pretty. You know, cut and dry, it was just numbers, but taking those numbers and putting them in an infographic form and. Putting that on our Facebook page, putting that in the newsletter, sending those PDFs and screenshots to the teachers. So that they can add them to a class dojo message. I just want to be able to plaster as much information as possible in a very accessible way. So that people understand I and and my thinking and my reflection on the the public opinion, not necessarily here. But nationally around education is that we all got flooded with us for money. So we're all loaded. And that. Schools just that that the state gives it to us and that it's an obligation of the state. Well, the state technically is meeting their minimal obligation to us. As a community, what? What do we want that is more? And that the more part is what. The community will decide today, does the community want to come back?
I like I I like the idea of kind of going at it a couple of different ways too, just to show obviously like this this apparent need like with what Richard is showing. You know, that specific need than the number of paras that we had in previous years versus now. To say, hey, this isn't just us on a hiring screen here. We're just, we are not able to afford. The correct amount of staffing because of our budget constraints. And then also kind of layered into not just saying we need, we need, we need, but make sure that we show. You know, the standard performance to show how excellent of a school, hey, you guys are providing your money and it's working really well. We want to continue to have it work. Really well and you know, and this is what we need to kind of to make that happen. Yeah, and going through the budget as well and.
Every attempt is made to be as efficient and as meaningful as possible. And that from the beginning of of my coming here, I knew we were going to get to this point one way or the other. And that I will have to ultimately stand in front of people and they'll ask, you know, well, where could you save another dollar? I don't know. And I'm very much anyone who is asked to look at expenditures or anything related to our budget. I've laid it out because I realize I'm not the smartest person. And if someone else can look at it and go, hey, look, there you go, do that and this and a lot of it, you got an extra ten grand. There are, there are people who know more than I do who have the potential to find solutions. And the more involved people are and the more knowledgeable they are, the greater the likelihood that they will help us find a solution. The solution may not be a levy. But unless we bring, you know, we have to bring people together and have a conversation to get to the point of. Maintaining the level of instruction and staffing that West Valley is known for. At this point, it's 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 financial and. We need other solutions. So that's. That's what we're coming up this month is. How do we solve this this burden? Because. Not buying extra math for everybody, that that didn't cut it. We're we're still. We're still struggling. And I would like to be able to tell teachers, yes. If you feel like this is going to make a meaningful impact. Then we need to be able to provide it to our students.
I'd like that we give our pairs more money. I to me, that is the, that's the biggest, that that to me is the. Biggest thing we need to push with people, you know, they make seventy dollars at McDonald's and and we pay them.
I mean, that's a good point, Carolyn. Dispose the.
I think it's all in public record.
Our entry level paras making less than thirteen dollars an hour here.
And they get free online medical there and tuition paid and.
Since we're on that topic, our our lowest paid para. If they opt out of insurance, let's say they have insurance through another person, they are able to take the six thousand dollars that the district puts towards benefits. They're able to take that as like a cash distributed over theirs. It, just as a reference, it brings them up from like eighteen thousand dollars a year. To twenty four thousand dollars a year. So a para who's not taking any benefits, it's is taking all the cash that she can is still clearing. Twenty four thousand dollars a year.
And how many hours would that be for?
That's seven and a quarter hours for a hundred eighty days. So before moving to action, I don't so last month. And a closed session discussed my evaluation. I know we're already running late, but this is going to be a process over the next couple of months. I would like to request an executive session to discuss my contract. I brought lots of printouts and stuff, so hopefully it can go quickly. But I. But. I know people are here listening to the action items and I'd like them to have that opportunity. So if we could have the executive session after. After the action items.
Yeah, I think anybody who has a dear can do that. I think we'll do the action items and then we'll have a executive session. All right, with that, should we go on to the action items? Consideration of proposed twenty three, twenty four school calendars. And they were on art. They are, yes, I have copies here though. I guess myself, I feel that the. We get Cindy set out, set up surveys and fifty two percent would like the late start to forty seven. Percent wanting early release, really, really close, but I I feel that with the. Parents even was, you know, was even more of a discrepancy than than the fifty two to forty seven. And I'd like to have them think that. We'll follow what the survey indicated and go with the the. Late start like we're doing now and while everybody else, but I'd like to see us go with the late start. I think there's a good advantage to both and disadvantages, but and it's an awful close. I mean, this. How if you did the significant digits or whatever, it'd be really close, but I I'd like to see somebody stay with the late start. We can anything. Conversation on that.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's it's obviously it's really close, but it doesn't tell us that we're doing something completely against everyone's wishes.
You're going to have, you know, you're going to have half of people mad at this either way. Pretty much fifty fifty. So.
Possible or how many years out would it be the ascertain the idea of a four day school week?
I don't think.
For today and we can look at that and at least as an option.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I mean, it's not going to happen next year. Okay, but we have to adopt the calendar with the idea that if it's doesn't, then we have to have seven days, right? Or do we have to, does this have to be casting?
Just change the late start to no start. We adopt the calendar and publish it, are we bound to it?
Yeah, you're you're pretty committed.
What is our date that we have to have this figured out?
It's March.
Yeah.
Most.
We're talking just months.
We're, we're already running a little bit behind on having a calendar for and I. I'm not opposed to a four day work week, a four day school week, but. I don't know enough about that to say one way or the other, which one I would endorse. And whenever you're, we're talking about so many variables associated with that. We're talking about the impact on families. Whereas now they're dependent on their children being in school five days a week and then we're going to switch to four next year. I don't think that's a good consideration. I don't know what the impact on student achievement is. I don't know how. I I haven't read any research and unfortunately I miss Ashley's spill at the beginning, so I don't even know what that was.
I guess the question is, is how much time do we have to actually make this decision? Because if we have two or three months to actually make this decision, let's spend the time and research this and make the right decision for our calendar versus. I mean, maybe it's going to take a year or two to actually research this and come up with an answer, then yes, we need to do something.
I think switching to a. A four day calendar. This school year for next year. I would not recommend it. What I recommend researching and studying. Some time finding out how other districts have done this, how it's been implemented. And I heard on the radio last week, they did this big study in the UK and everybody loved it and stuck with it, but that was in an industrial setting, not in a school setting. That it is a significant change and. I I absolutely want to use significant changes like that. That's just my recommendation. Some people are quicker, but I would, I would want to know more before I would stand here and and make that recommendation.
We had months and months to actually make this decision on the calendar, then we could use it to at least know a little bit more first, but. I think, well, if we don't.
We've got to have it in, don't we, Cindy?
We can't, I I don't, I don't know because I wasn't expecting this whole four day.
No, no, I mean, we have to, I thought you said before that, you know, we were late in, okay, this calendar for next year anyway, because it's.
I don't know if there's a hard steadfast deadline. Asking for our calendars, like once all the courts approve them, you know, maybe the copy of it.
I think another thing to consider is that. If I it might have to go through the union, it really affects teacher contracts and the number of days. Pay scale, it would affect.
It would affect working conditions. So.
There's like five things that you have to go through that the state says you have to go through before you can make that switch, it's not just impossible. But they have, they recommend these surveys with community, find out the impact of the impact statements. You got to check with your union. There's like, it's not an impossible thing. But I think you are probably looking out. I think there is a policy that tells us what the date is that we have to have the calendar done by. If it's not your CV, then I need some policy.
My brain was thinking this was going to be a year or two process to even look at it.
But I know it's. And that is is certainly something that we can pursue going through those steps. I would prefer to do it next year.
Well, we should, we should start pursuing it now. Yes.
Right, we can start now, but it's.
But but with the idea that next year is already set up with a a calendar in place, we're going to pursue this four year. Their four days of the year after. Okay, so we need, we need a. We got to either do that.
The late start is option A, early release is option.
Okay. Any any discussion?
A is late start, right?
A is late start. Wednesday late start, correct? As in it's about Wednesday and start. Was it Friday or Wednesday?
Friday light start.
Okay, Friday late start, that's that's option A. All right, I need discussion.
Are you, are you going to take comment?
Yes.
Can I share a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so and some of this is my own thoughts on this and some of this came from other staff members. So just some. Okay, so, and some of this is my own thoughts on this and some of this came from other staff members, so just some, some, I, I thought, why am I advocating for the late start still, and I will support whatever gets decided, but the late start, I have a few things regarding staff, and, well, for some people, mine will be the teachers, but on Fridays, there's additional time to remove snow before the crowds get here and the roads are better for the buses. On the late start Fridays in the winter, it is lighter out for travel and at the bus stops. On, on the late start, the staff is fresh for meetings and they're not tired from teaching all day. Meetings then are about the topic at hand and not about the problem of the day. Student interruptions are rare on the late start in those meetings in the morning. Staff members attend and they don't tend to set appointments at that time. And I know that when we had early releases, it was pretty common for them to take time off of that day or the afternoon because then they have less sub plans. On a late start, the start time is true for the meetings for the PLCs. They're clean starting at eight AM. If we release forty-five minutes early, it takes at least ten to fifteen minutes to clear this end of the building of students, and the middle school teachers monitor the halls at the end of the day and the meeting's time starts getting fuzzy. For me, as an administrator, at the beginning of the day, I'm more able to meet with staff and sit in on the meetings and address any concerns or questions the teachers have about data and curriculum. With an early release, my support as an administrator to that group would decrease because at the end of the day, I'm usually tending to student and family concerns and then the operations of the building or buses, et cetera. Afternoon PLCs would put an additional strain on afternoon, afternoon meeting times when we have special education and parent meetings, and I usually have those one out of every three days. Impact on the five-eight students. Students may come to late, and this is for a bowl, students may come to school at the normal time in the morning because there's paras here to watch them, and that would be true even if they stayed late. There could be more in the afternoon because we have athletics, it could be up to fifty at a time waiting here. But they have, students have support on either end. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that middle schools aim for a start time no earlier than eight-thirty, and one day a week, our students benefit from the opportunity to sleep for an extra thirty minutes to an hour. Studies show that adequate sleep affects mental health, academics, and school performance. On early release days, students act like it's a holiday, some of the academic tone gets lost and it's replaced by an error of playtime. The kids are not settled on those days and even free times are hard to manage. This doesn't happen with the late starts, and if anything, the students are better on those days. The proposed early release is planned for Wednesday, because we know from history, then the early release days more students are absent when we have an early release. So, and this will be compounded by a Friday or Monday early release, so we don't send the early release on Friday or Monday, more kids in the absence. So Wednesday late start would cause the middle schoolers to have an early release or a weekend after every two school days, in addition to rotating AMV schedules. So if we do staff, the students have an, an A day and a B day and those classes alternate. So they will be going A day, V day Monday, and then a different schedule for Wednesday, and then A day or B day, A day, and then you have a weekend, and then two days again, and then, you know, it's never consistent. And even though they still have A days and B days, the Friday late start allows for middle school students to have the same time schedule and continuity four days in a row, and then an abbreviated Friday, four consecutive days allows the students to settle in. And I know the entire elementary perspective, they don't, they run the same schedule on all five days currently. I know that they need some help with paras and things to be able to get all those interventions and things in. It's tight for them, but it would really cause the middle school to be inconsistent. And parents have shared that they would rather students have unstructured a long time in the morning when the parents already know the students are at home and leaving from there to school, rather than unstructured time in the afternoon when they're coming home to empty houses. And then another comment just from parents is they like no rush Fridays, it's a more relaxed start at the end of a busy week.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Alright, do you have any more discussion, or are we ready to take a vote on option A, Friday late start? Alright, on favor? I oppose. Alright, recorded that the majority don't look like we're gonna have Friday late starts. Okay. Consideration about a death state attendance agreement, Cecilia.
Yes, so we have one student that transferred to Crossroads in late January, so we just got the agreement from Crossroads.
So we just need to okay it. So some of them want to make motions to send this student out of district for Crossroads.
Make a motion for the student to go to Crossroads. Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Consideration of accepting retirement of Mary Kate Dover.
No.
Beautiful letter, bright tears to my eyes.
Thank you, well, I have. Thank you for your comments, I was just thinking, this is a long, kind of depressing meeting on. And I'm thinking, well, as one of the, you know, higher-end teachers, as far as the pay scale goes, half my salary could raise the para. Hire a new teacher, that would be very happy. So if I could leave that. If I have any say. Otherwise, I love my.
Although, we should have done this before the calendar vote and then asked her if there was one of them, it would have kept her here longer.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And make a motion to accept Mary Kate's retirement? Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed. The, the first consideration, first reading on board policy, that cell phone policy that we talked about last. Does everybody have that?
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with it. Any, any discussion on that? Did, did check it out. We're gonna let people have option of using their own phone and having stipend for that. Or not, it's, I think it's, so this is just the first reading, so we have to accept first reading and the next, next meeting is when we would put it into the.
Alright, this is first not done this.
I think we have to do it, I think we have to okay it on the first reading and then we, then we put it into the group on the second meeting. Next month, so with this, we're just gonna consider that first reading of the board policy sixty-four thirty about cell phones.
And I tried looking at other districts because, oh, I don't specifically know how to change the wording. And I looked at several, especially some of the larger local districts, they don't have a, a policy sixty-four thirty. And there wasn't a model policy on MTSBA.
Oh.
So that's a code, thinking about just.
What, what, did you, you, everybody else read the policy idea?
So there's not a, kind of a, a benchmark to prepare things to. My thinking is that other districts probably don't have a policy for this, they just include it in administrative contracts. So it's part of the administrator's contract and not part of district policy.
Oh, okay.
And I think that probably acted, because I sent an email to other clerks in the district, and a lot of them said, some of them said, like, only the superintendent gets it, some of them said, you know, principals did it, some of them handful of them did it, but they didn't make it sound like optional, I guess.
I would guess that most of them are contractual based.
And we, I mean, that's, that's another thing to consider, do we want to, I don't know how we eliminate a policy, do we, do we need this policy? Or is it a is it a contract decision?
I don't wanna have to go back and change everybody's contract just because.
Well, it would be effective next year.
What's the status quo, as far as?
Do you mean who has?
As far as the, the, the contribution on a monthly basis.
So currently, we don't have anyone on the district plan. Laura was the last employee on the district plan, the, her, her data plan was forty-nine dollars and some change. So that's how we arrived at the, the fifty dollars. Prior to her, Mark Wilson was on the plan.
Well, and I, so when I started, I didn't know if that was an option for me, and so Cindy Foley was in, she's like, oh, well, like, somebody yourself, I'm like, what are you talking about? So I think in years past, there was quite a few people on it, but as they've started leaving, it's dropped off, like, nobody.
And nobody has done this stipend thing before, right?
No, that's actually what most districts do.
Yeah, most districts do, because nobody want, I mean, I shouldn't say nobody, most people don't wanna, like, if I have ATT, I don't wanna have to switch to Verizon just to get myself okay with at school.
It's a matter of either switching providers or having a second phone. I've had, I've been a, a two-room administrator and it doesn't, it doesn't work for me. It is up dead in the bottom of my purse and everybody has my personal number anyhow. Yeah, so this time last year, I was looking for a new administrative position and just about every one that I looked at had a stipend or a cell phone. It's just, it's more efficient, you're also putting the, the liability of the phone on the employee and all over the district.
I think we should just do it.
I feel like it's less of a policy, but it's more of a contractual thing.
Using our contracts with no one else, I felt like for a long time, it was in our principal contracts with no amount and option.
Yeah, it feels better in a contract, and it feels better that we can look at it that way.
I think, I think when this was originally brought forward in two thousand fifteen, and it was a matter of employees being on a district plan, it made more sense to have a policy because you're, you're accepting basically some of this district own, and therefore you have a different level of responsibility to it. I think with no one doing that anymore, having a stipend, and it's like everything else in a contract, it's reviewed annually. Right now, the going appropriate rate is fifty dollars a month. That would be something we would review every year, and if the cost of data plans rises significantly, then we would discuss that cost in the contract.
That's what I get. I like it that way.
And that seems pretty standard across all the other districts as well.
And that there's no, current policy, oh, has a one hundred dollar cellphone allowance towards the purchase of a phone, we would eliminate that because there's no need, you're, before using their, their personal phones. And also be a part of a contract, we're never recording that contract to the school board, that you would have that approval over who who the employees are, and it's more about their position and less about who the employee is in approving that stipend or not approving it.
Right. It would be easier to track what they're wanting to.
We add Kat to the, we add Kat to the admitted classified staff instead of the teaching staff, her contract, but we should include that because she's our.
So just to kind of cap who would, recap who would, I think would be appropriate for this type of. So these are people who are expected to be available by phone pretty much twenty-four seven, one way or another, so there's myself and the two principals. Phil, as the facilities manager, he's also the first guy on the alarm list. Anything goes wrong in the building, Phil gets a phone call. Kat, as the technology director, because there are times that it's just quickest to call her, she is also one of those emergency contacts for things that happen in the building. And then the athletic director, just because with teams traveling, and she'd be in the point of contact for all of our athletic ongoings. So we, and Cecilia, because she's also on call twenty-four seven, whether she likes it or not.
Even when I'm homesick, I'm trying to send emails, and then I'm like, I didn't make any sense.
She's on vacation last week, sending me screenshots of the preliminary budget.
Well, I woke up, it was Friday morning and I was like, oh, it's gonna be. So I had the.
I didn't respond, no.
I think that all sounds, yeah, I mean, those all seem appropriate, and I think just putting it in the contracts.
So as, as job requirements and working conditions change, if, if we, more people, it would be appropriate if if it changes to where it's not appropriate for, you know, then, then I think it would be easier to modify within a contract than within a policy.
I agree.
Okay, so what are we gonna do, we're gonna, we're going to eliminate board policy sixty-four thirty. I mean, we have to fold on what we're gonna do. This is the first reading.
Year.
This.
No, well, right now, honestly, it doesn't matter because the district isn't paying.
No, it's, no, it's doing anything.
But we should get this off the books if it's not.
So we, well, that's what I'm saying, we could, you can remove it. Remove it right now because it's not gonna impact anyone, if we still had people on the district plan and the district chose to remove it, but since no one's on the plan.
I'd like to just see us remove the district, this, this board policy number sixty-four thirty.
I'd make a motion to remove this policy.
Uh, any more discussion? Alright, anybody, everybody in favor of that?
I.
Somebody opposed? Okay, so that has been eliminated.
And it will resurface in contracts, which I think is a good place.
And it's already in my contract.
Okay, we got that, yeah. Okay, next one, consideration of adding Lisa Bell to Glacier and Three Rivers Bank account and removing Laura Cox. That's a note reader, but, yeah.
I just need her to be able to sign and access accounts for people.
Laura Cox is, but, yeah, removed.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we, Lisa Bell's the new hire, and we'll just put her in on that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, any discussions? Alright, all those in favor? Alright, consideration of adopting resolution as to any changes in revenues now.
So this is by statute and estimation of, because we have the real way, shape, or form of knowing what our tax levies will be until August.
Okay.
So this is an estimate based on what we did last year compared to what we're projecting. And so these are the differences in those funds, so.
Using the fifteen thousand. Extra.
So as you can see, most of the funds are actually I mean, lower by, I mean, a small portion, transportation fund I increased because it's a projection, it's a guesstimate, but I always feel safe safer adding too much because then come August, if we have to, you know, if it's lower, it's better. So that's just, and it has to be written in the paper in the month of March, it has to be advertised, and so that's what.
I see some of the others you started, I wanted to plant in paper yesterday. So you would take care of that.
And your tuition projection going down as because we're projecting less.
So, tuition, so tuition is for Crossroads and the special ed co-op. And so based on what our re-appropriated reserves were last year, are you keeping it similar to, like, as far as like. Yeah, so that's why it, it just, that much less this year.
You have a motion to accept that, adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes.
Alright. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed. Our consideration of cross-country coaches, Tony Smith, four-to-eight head coach, we knew he had all gone to the process that we have for hiring.
I didn't bring my packets with me, so these are internal.
Yep, I opened it up internally through positions, and I had four people interested, and then one dropped out, said it actually wouldn't work. And actually, they're like the most perfect people that would be doing this, so I'm very happy with these coaches.
Oh, great, don't we just go ahead and do them all, one, two, we have plus one, yeah, three, four, let's do them all, let's.
I'll make a motion to approve all the coaches. Oh, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion to two, three.
I'll say.
Cross-country.
All right, are any, any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I was opposed, forgot it. Okay, so we go on to next information items. Budget expenditure line item detail, which we have in our. I've got it. Okay, um. And then. But these are information items, we don't need to have any discussion on the, I will, we can have discussion, but we don't need to vote on them. Okay, any discussion? No. Eight-thirty at night. That clock is wrong. Lane, lane changes, we also have that. It, it's for information only, so those lane changes, which is according to their contracts, so that's sort of the done deal too. Okay, now, do we vote to executive? Thank you.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
We have to make a motion.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I'll second your motion, okay.
All right, any discussion about going into executive session?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We've got a lot of information. Okay, um, all those in favor? Um, who wants to take notes, can I?
Not at this time.
Just say hi. I'm gonna take a break, give.